So I will.
Sorry.
No problem. I should have asked you first before I started. I'll call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, January 11th at 6:30. It's meeting 1818 of the Planning and Zoning Commission for East Windsor. It is entirely by Zoom tonight. We have all of our members present, so we definitely have a forum. For added agenda items, we have an application for 44 Prospect Hill Road for site plan modification. It's PZ 2022-01. So could we add that to the agenda? Ruth Ann, would that go under? New business or receipt of applications?
Well, you're gonna have to re- we could, can you receive it under new business?
Sure, as long as the record shows we've received it.
Okay.
So could we get a motion to receive the Walmart application under new business and begin the discussion?
All right, I make a motion that we add the agenda item, PZ 2022-0144 Prospect Hill Road, Site Plan Modification for Walmart Edition to be discussed under item 13, New Business.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, Frank seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye or raise a hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous, so we'll add that under item 13. We have no legal notices, so the next item is public participation. Is there any member of the public who wants us to discuss something that is not listed on the agenda? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to approval of minutes. We got our minutes for the December 28th meeting, which was both in person and on Zoom. Does anybody have any suggested edits or changes?
I'm fine with them.
Great. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of regular meeting, 1817, held on December 28th, 2021, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think that Frank, I think you were first on the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The minutes are approved. We're going to receive the application from Walmart under item 13. Do we have anything under performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, or road acceptance?
We don't.
Okay, then we will continue the public hearing for the Town of East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission, text amendment application for Chapter 8, Section 813, the Cannabis Establishments to Unact Zoning Regulations to Establish Requirements for Responsible and Equitable Regulation of Adult Use Cannabis per Public Act 21-1. We tabled it last time, waiting on CROG. Have we heard from CROG?
We have not.
Do you want us to table it again?
Makes sense.
Is there anybody?
I just wanted to point out, there's a couple of interested parties on the meeting, so.
If they would like to say anything with respect to the application, it's still a public hearing, so if anybody who is here to speak on that would like to, we'd entertain it.
Good evening, JR3, JR Russo, here representing Eric Spungian for the property down on Prospect Hill with regard to the application. We don't have any further comment at this time. I guess we as well will be waiting for CROG's comments when they come in, so at this point, we're comfortable with the way the new regulation is worded.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then a motion to table until we hear from CROG would be in order.
Well, one question, what's our deadline? How far can we extend this one out? Are we, we've postponed it twice or three times now. Are we approaching the time threshold?
We have to close within the, is it 65?
Um, 35 days, once it's opened with total extensions of 65, but this is a commission application. And so there's no party that's going to be aggrieved by you leaving the hearing open to get more comments. So I wouldn't worry too much about that, particularly because we're waiting on CROG, which is statutory.
Is there any indication when CROG's next meeting is and they're going to act on it?
Well, Ruth, I forget what day she submitted it, but you have to wait 35 days. If they don't respond, then you can move forward once the 35 days has clicked.
Okay, so at our next meeting, whether they commented or not, we
Yep.
will move forward.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing for the application of the Town of East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission text amendment of Chapter 8, Section 813, and Cannabis Establishment, until our next meeting, which will be January 25th, 2022.
Is there a second to that motion? Frank seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling till the next meeting, say aye or raise a hand?
Aye.
Okay. It's tabled. We have no new public hearings. Under old business, we have South and Phelps Road, a subdivision application. Ruth Ann, do you want to talk about where we are?
Sure. At the last meeting, we talked through several waivers as far as creating the subdivision at a location where the houses in the neighborhood are pre-existing, and we agreed to draft up a motion for consideration by the commission that would incorporate those waivers, and a draft of that was included in your agenda package today. I could put it on the share screen if you like, if you don't have it handy.
Do all the members have a paper copy with them, or does somebody need it up on the screen? Okay, I think everybody has it in a way they're comfortable, so we don't need it put up. Do any of the members have any questions they want to ask before we proceed forward? Is everybody comfortable proceeding? Okay. It's something we've discussed. It's in the best interests of the town. It's basically an application from the town. So if people are comfortable, a motion would be in order to approve.
One question, do we need to read in all the different waivers that are granted, or just basically state granting the waivers mentioned in the memo? Because traditionally, we vote on each waiver individually, and this is far different than a normal subdivision.
I think it would be good to at least list the sections that we are waiving in the motion.
Very well. I'll make a motion to approve the application of PZ 21-28, Town of East Windsor, for a 16 lot subdivision and associated waivers requested for properties located at South and Phelps Road, Assessors Map Number 42, Lot 20, Lot Number 53, East Windsor. Waivers granted due to the subdivision of land being proposed presents a unique circumstance of layout beneath an existing neighborhood with houses and infrastructure already in place. Customary planning considerations do not apply. Waivers granted for the East Windsor subdivision regulations are 11.2 design requirements, 11.3 open space requirements, 2.17 agricultural buffer zones, Section 9 bond requirements, Section 6 street design, Section 5.8 traffic analysis, Section 5.7 landscape design, Section 2.7 street trees. This is also in compliance with findings 1 and conditions of approval 1 through 3, all coming from a memo from Mike D'Amato dated December 9th, 2021.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion? I guess I'll state for the record that as the motion indicated, it's a unique situation. The homeowners are there, and this enables them to own the land their houses are on and move forward from the situation they've been in where they were renting the land under their homes from the town. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. That's unanimous.
And if, could I make a request, please?
Yes.
Mike, could please send me the word document so I can add that to your schedule of motions tonight?
Yeah, no problem.
I'll get that to you, Craig, no problem. Thank you.
Next up, under new business, we're going to have, we are receiving the application from numbered PZ 2022-0140 Prospect Hill Road for a site plan modification. It's in addition to Walmart. Staff just got it and has not had time to review it, but we will let the applicant explain to us what the application is and begin our discussion. So would the applicant like to describe what you have planned?
Good evening. Is my sound working?
Yes, it is.
All right, I had some control earlier, so I had to ask. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time tonight to appear before the commission. Walmart is proposing an expansion to the existing store as part of their online grocery pickup.
And could he identify himself for the record, please?
Oh, sorry.
But if he could identify himself.
Oh, my name is Ben Dariana with WD Partners. We are the project architect for Walmart. Our company headquarters is 7,007 Discovery Boulevard, Dublin, Ohio, 43017.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Walmart is looking at adding an expansion to the store. This is an existing store with an existing online grocery pickup program. The expansion would be fully dedicated to the grocery pickup program. It would not be used for resale use or any other use by customers. It will only be Walmart associates using the space. The proposed expansion is 5,920 square feet, and as I noted, that's all to be used for the grocery pickup program. As part of the site plan, we are proposing, this location of expansion will be on the southeast corner of the building. We're on bump right at that space where it's currently impervious area, and so the expansion will not increase any impervious area on the site and should not have any noticeable effect on these two requirements for the site as it is currently proposed.
Do you, do you have a picture of what it will look like that you can put up on the screen?
Yes, let me see. Do you have to let me?
I just made you co-host. You should be able to share.
Here we go. I was all right, there we go. Share screen too. You guys should see it, I think.
Yeah, we do. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting, giving me the ability. So I have the follow simple site plans up. Site, C1 is just the general cover sheet, address, that good stuff. Two is the general notes we have, and C3 is the real meat and potatoes of the project. So the expansion is to be down here in this corner, this is the 5,920 square foot expansion. This shows the proposed location. There isn't really no location on the site that would allow for it, so this is kind of our only option. If we go farther forward, it would cause more issues on the site according to Walmart's research. If we go here along the back, then it would cause issues bringing the trucks in. Like I said, this is currently impervious area, so there will be no increase on the sewer requirements for the site. And then as part of the site plan, we are also propose some minimal directional signage on the site. We'll put the only real site plans, there'll be directional signage are located here at this entrance, and those are on C7. It is a straight sign and a right arrow, which is these two arrows right here. It'd be straight and right will be the only directional signs on the site. See, no and then also and also as part of the project, we are going to be restriping a good portion of the lot back here. And with the restriping, the site currently has 785 parking spaces, and we're proposing a reduction to 727 spaces. Though it is a reduction of 58 spots, Walmart does not anticipate any increase in traffic flow on the site as customers that utilize the program are already Walmart customers, so there will be no real change in use of the parking on the site. I know I talked to Ruth earlier about this. She said, mentioned this, I might have concerns about the sanitary, additional load for the sanitary. There would be no additional sanitary load. The only increased sanitary, the space is there are a couple of condensate lines from the coolers in there. So there's no bathrooms, there's no restrooms available for anyone to use. It would just be a couple of condensate lines, which is minimal to almost zero impact on a sanitary system. And also as part of the directional signage, Walmart does have signs on all the pickup stalls. Let me blow this up a little bit. They would be here between all these stalls, and maybe all the edge spots also, the line with the dots, and those look something like look something like this detail here, detail 2. It indicates a parking patient number. The number you called, call the store, tell them you arrived, and then the pickup sign notes that these are for pickup use only. These signs are 74 inches tall from grade to top of sign as part of Walmart's proto, and allows anyone, regardless of vehicle size, to be able to read the signs. And like I mentioned earlier, there will be no real change traffic flow. It'd be just current customers that are not utilizing this program will park here on the side of the building instead of in the general parking at the front. So here, instead of instead of out here. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Ben, I do. Hopefully, when we get over this pandemic, and I would assume that there will not be anywhere near as many pickups after it's over, and you'll still have the shoppers coming into the store. What do you plan to do with this area?
Walmart, so different areas of the country have addressed the pandemic differently. Stores in Florida have increased their their pickup parking three, four, and fivefold even, and they're still seeing a full utilization of these spots. A number of parents, parents of young children, myself included here, find it kind of convenient instead of hauling my kids into the store to utilize this instead of, you know, unpacking everyone going into the building. So Walmart would, if heaven forbid this program died and was being utilized, Walmart, and I can guarantee this, would likely restrike back to normal parking. But with 700 plus stalls on the site, Walmart has ample parking for about anything under the sun.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions from the commission?
Yeah, Ben, you currently have, what, six pickup locations now, spots?
Ah, I do believe so. Let me crack open Google here. Walmart, East Windsor. Sorry about this. This is the one thing I forgot to pull up.
How many are you going to go up to?
We are adding, let me see the math.
Ruth, can you let Alan Baker in?
Oh, thank you.
We are adding, so we're moving 71 spaces for the pickup program, and we'll be adding 31 new ones.
So there'll be 31 total pickup, or you're adding, in addition, so you'll go to 37 total?
There should be 37 total. So as part of the calculations here, there are 785 on the site currently. We're moving 71 for it, and then we're adding 31 new ones.
So everything in the dashed lines will be pickup spots?
We indicate, let me zoom in a little bit more. So the thick bars here indicate where the pickup spots will be. And these little dashed lines are those directional signs on C7. It would be these at all those locations.
Okay, so basically, that side lot will become mostly a pickup lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the other question I have, where you have that stop bar drawn, kind of the turn where the new curb change is going to be, have you run the turning radiuses for emergency vehicles? That they can make it up and down through all of them?
I was told that would be compliant, but if you'd like to make that condition of any approvals in the future, we'd be happy to meet with those conditions. The civil engineer told me everything was compliant for this scope.
Because I imagine you're still going to have pretty much any of the traffic that comes up, Newberry Road will still enter into that area and then possibly drive through this entire pickup area to go park outside that area.
Pull through here and then drive up this way as the mouse goes?
Yeah.
It should be all the parking requirements still, and I was looking at Google Earth about your earlier question about the existing parker, pick, parking for the pickup program, where that's actually going to be eliminated. The expansion will be going right about minimize this a little bit. One day, one day I'll learn technology. So based on the image here, we're going to, holy cow, I'm sorry about that. Based on the image here, we're going to be putting part of the expansion right over the existing OGP parking. So the six spots are lost, and it'll just be 31 dedicated spots.
It'd be 31.
But I, yes, yes, sir. And then I was told that all the access for emergency vehicles will be compliant. Because by looking at Google here, it's showing me that why is this not working? Holy cow. Since we're not actually changing the islands here, we should still be complying as long as the existing site plan is compliant with what's on there.
But you're adding, you're adding a new radius, you're adding a new radius now where the bump out comes out, and you have that stop line and then kind of a 90-degree curve to go back to the original first aisle.
This one?
Not at the entrance, nowhere, where your, where your new bump out is going to be.
Oh, the other, oh, I see.
A pire, yeah.
This turn, we have your cross.
Do you notice on that picture, did you notice on that picture, Ben, there's a lot, and I go to Walmart quite frequently, there's always a bunch of trailers and whatnot parked in there, which just cuts down the entranceway quite a bit.
I can make a note to Walmart that that needs to be addressed.
And they're both Walmart trailers and other trailers, I guess, just sleeping or spending the night or whatever they do.
Walmart has that problem. It's kind of endemic to Walmart nationwide where people will just park about time it's addressed. Those trucks are more than happy to leave. You're talking about the stop bar.
Yeah, if you keep going, go to the left a little more, keep going to the left, and right path, if you were now to take a right-hand turn into there, it would right, exactly. Would emergency vehicles be able to make that right-hand turn and swing around through that radius?
I can ask and get an answer for you.
Okay.
Radius, R-E-D, radius. Corner.
Now, and I'll ask you, your pickup hours are available till what, 7:00 PM, I believe?
I think so. I would have to confirm, but.
There will be people walking out to make deliveries to these spots in the dark. Are you planning on increasing any lighting in that area?
Yes, let me blow this up a little bit. We're adding a couple of lights, one here and one here, and then it looks like there might be existing lighting over here. I'm telling you, but we're adding at least two light poles, it looks like. One here and one here.
Have you done a photometric on that at all?
I will, I, there should be one, and I can check on it.
All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions from the commission? Okay, at this point, we will need to continue our discussion to the next meeting, so staff has time to review. So hopefully you can join us on January 25th with answers to the questions asked and whatever else comes up along the way.
I can do it. Thank you for your time, everyone. Have a good evening.
Okay. Do we have anything under other business?
No, we do not.
Anything under correspondence?
No.
Business meeting? And also, there's nothing under executive session, so with that, we could adjourn this meeting and then open our Aqua for Protection meeting. If somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn and reopen, or maybe it needs to be two motions.
I make a motion we adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
And it's 6:54? What is your time, Ian?
I have 6:59.
Okay, thank you.
And now we will move to opening the Town of East Windsor Aqua for Protection Agency Special Meeting for January 11th at 6:30 PM, well, at 7:00 PM. It's being held by Zoom. And we have a quorum with all of our members present. So since the Since the town by ordinance has decided that the Planning and Zoning Commission is also the Aquifer Protection Agency for the town. To initiate our meetings for the year. We need to approve a meeting schedule. Um, we have with our packet. A proposed meeting schedule which is identical to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Schedule for twenty twenty-two. The only question I would have for. Um, staff is, do we really have to do this at every single meeting or could it be every other meeting?
Well. It could be at every other meeting. And I think, um. As applications come forward to Planning and Zoning Commission, if they're in the aquifer protection. Uh, zone, then there's gonna be an aquifer protection meeting. It could end up being kind of an on, on-demand as well. My sense is many will get canceled.
Okay, as long as we're not going to every single time have to.
Right.
Can cancel them. And what's the procedure to cancel them?
It needs to be public noticed. Um, for cancellation, so if it's, um, thinking. You have to do it at least twenty-four hours in advance. Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, Ruth, so then if we do have an application that is in the aquifer protection. Is the procedure gonna be that it has to be reviewed by the aquifer protection meeting prior to going to the planning and zoning meeting?
I haven't seen that same requirement. What I've seen is it gets referred over to Connecticut Water Company. Um, for their comment, they have the, they have the. They can comment. On the application. I mean, choose not to, but, um.
Well, what I'm thinking then, I mean, we've had some applications that have come in, discussed and approved the same evening. But if it requires review for aquifer protection. We may have to change the order that it needs aquifer protection approval prior to it being put on the. For planning and zoning.
Or would it be like a Crog referral where we start it, then we refer it to Crog and wait?
I think we can work out those logistics, um. At the meeting on the twenty-fifth when we have the representative from Connecticut Water Company. Because the, the statute kind of reads that they may comment. And within seven days of filing an application. They need to be notified. They have their own. Form to be filled out that asks the pertinent questions for their review. But the, you know, those little nuances, I think we can work out. At our next meeting.
So do we have to pay for? Legal notice of every meeting in the Journal Inquirer too?
You know, I don't know because it's not a, um. Considered a land, you know, it's not like a land use. Okay, it's not a zoning, it's not a zoning, it's land use, it's not a zoning. Statute. So I. There's no public hearing process beyond the planning and zoning. That the agency has to review. Like if it goes to wetlands or planning and zoning, it's gotta. You have to assess whether it's in the aquifer protection area and then that group. You, your aquifer protection agency hats, um, review it for those aspects. So whether there's a separate. It's an interesting noise, whether there's a separate, um, is that my dog that you're laughing at? I totally screamed out.
Where was my stomach? I haven't had dinner yet.
You can eat while we do this.
So, um, more clarification to come.
Now, it just seems like a big expense to keep running legal modises for meetings. Okay, um. What's the will of the group? Do you wanna leave it where we have it? Every planning and zoning meeting is. Aquifer protection meeting. Potentially on the schedule with cancellation if we have nothing.
I would like to get Mike's input if he has any into this.
Mike, have you dealt with this in other towns?
Um. I do my best to avoid it. But. I, I've been thinking about, uh, the analogy because. You know, you guys are a planning and zoning commission. When you approve a, a site plan and then get asked to look at a zoning regulation, you don't adjourn your meeting and put on a, your planning hat and take off your zoning hat. It's all, it's all done as part and parcel of what your responsibilities are. So I agree with Ruth that. We're not gonna be noticing things twice. You know, this is not gonna become some disjointed process. And I think that, um, we can set things up so that it doesn't feel like you're having to handle two different agencies worth of logistics.
That sounds encouraging.
Well, traditionally, the second meeting of the month has usually got the least, uh, amount of application, so. If we cut it back to the second meeting of every month, it might be adequate.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping when I asked the question, that we could get it. But maybe we'll hold people up unnecessarily if there's a lot of things that are in an aquifer protection areas.
Kind of follows what Mike just said is that we're gonna be discussing those things as part of the regular application. Because we're not gonna be, like I'm saying, switching hats and looking at it one way and then looking at it another way.
Could I add just a thought to that as well? If within seven days of accepting an application, it's gotta be noticed to the water company. They are halfway to the next meeting. So it's really, you know, if you have it once. It's not all that much additional time, you know? Cause we'd be halfway to the twenty-fifth if something came in tonight. And we have the applicant apply to. The water company.
And does it have to be a separate meeting? It can't be part of our regular meeting?
It has to be a separate meeting, it's the way the laws write it.
Laws make a lot of sense.
I guess we could reduce the number to the second. And if something comes up, we could hold a special meeting.
Does that concept work for people?
I'm not in favor of special meetings, but if we need them, we need them.
I mean, does it really make a difference if we don't have anything, we just post the cancelization, we cancel it. So. If we adopt these meeting dates and we don't have a meeting next week or next. On the twenty-fourth, we just cancel it. Just to cancel it, just posting, you don't have to advertise, you know, you don't have to put it in the newspaper or anything.
You just put it on the town website.
On the website and it's done. That way there, there's no special meetings, there's none, there's not forgetting it, they're always there, we just have to cancel it. It'd be easier for, I think it'd be easier for town staff to just say, is there anything? Nope, okay, we'll cancel it. Rather than, oh my gosh, we gotta put the agenda in. Or we have to notice the meeting.
Agreed.
That's what we do for, um, CBA. It's kind of an on-demand, um, commission, right? They meet four times in a year. We cancel all the other eight meetings.
Sounds good to me, Joe.
Okay.
What's the protocol if the planning and zoning meeting runs very late? We still have to hold regardless? We.
I, I would think so, it's scheduled.
Because there is something that requires us and we can't run our meeting past a certain time, correct?
Ten or ten thirty, I thought.
So we run up.
That's your bylaw, Mike. Your bylaws say that you have to, you have to close out at ten thirty. You can change your bylaws. I mean.
We run up to that thirty mark. And what we still, it's still okay to run, uh, the what, the aquifer because it's a different meeting?
You used to have subcommittee meetings in your PCC meetings and I don't know if that would work for this or not. Remember some time ago, you used to have subcommittees. For specific. Issues. Specific, specific, specific. Maybe regulations, whatever, it was some time ago. The way this is laid out, there's a requirement to have its own. Agency and agendas and meeting minutes established. It's a little bit different than the subcommittee that you're proposing. It's a great idea, it'd be nice to be able to do it that way. Just, just wanted to tell you, I, I was thinking in terms of you're doing a special meeting now or another meeting. Another set of meetings which. Somebody, if it not me, is going to charge you a meeting fee for. If you were part of a subcommittee, it would all be part of one meeting. Just thought, just saying. Things to think about.
So if we end up holding double amount of meetings. Even for the short amount of time. I don't know. Is that gonna drive up the cost?
Yeah, cause we'll have to pay.
You'll have to someone, other.
Someone will have to do the, uh, minutes.
Other recording secretaries have charged the town for a six-minute meeting. I don't personally feel that's probably right. And certainly not at the rate you're paying now, but that is legitimate. So it's something you need to consider. Whether I'm doing it or not. Because the day that I do, it'll end.
Isn't that what application fees are for to cover costs like that?
Are there application fees for, um, aquifer protection? In the town rights?
You don't have fees established officially for them as of yet.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're on a learning curve to figure out how to do this. And maybe the staff person from Connecticut Water Company, when they come. Next meeting can explain how other towns are doing it. And maybe somebody's figured out a more streamlined approach. Than what it's sounding like to us at this point.
Well, it's gonna be its own budget, correct? So if it has some budget, we're gonna, the town's gonna budget for a recording secretary and. So.
The town created the agency, so.
Yeah, so maybe, you know, maybe a budget's gotta be put together for it and that's it and it is what it is and. We pay, we pay.
So that's where it comes back to, is twelve meetings adequate or we need twenty-four?
Well, I think. Hopefully we don't need, I, it's more like CBA, it's, you know, noticed. That there's potentially twenty-four with the hope that we're canceling at least half, if not more.
I, I would like to see, uh, the staff. Look into this a little deeper and give us some more input because it seems like we're just going round and round here without coming to many. Uh, conclusions that are definite.
So, okay, the intention of tonight's meeting was to establish the calendar and next meeting was more of a logistical and how to. But this has been a good conversation for me to focus on, you want streamlining. Um, some, you know, questions on the what-ifs of meetings running along, what do we do and that kind of thing, so. I can put that together.
Sounds good to me.
So does the group want to adopt Ruth Ann's recommendation that we put. The bi-monthly, twice a month, meeting on the calendar and start canceling them? As opposed to doing special meetings when we need them, because we definitely need the January twenty-fifth meeting.
I, I personally think that's staff's decision, not our decision. I mean, we're such highly paid commission that we just go along with whatever they say.
How, how about we put, we postpone voting on the calendar till the next meeting? And we get educated by the water company and we'll get a better idea of just what kind of, uh. Application or workload we should anticipate.
That's fair. Can you live with that, Ruth? Then you have to make a special meeting for the twenty-fifth again. Cause it won't happen.
I think I need thirty days' notice for a special. Right?
You said we already have a scheduled meeting.
Was it fifteen?
For a special?
Yeah.
Under, under regular statutory requirements, you, you can file a special meeting agenda twenty-four hours, you just can't modify it during the meeting.
Agenda, but what about posting it?
Posting like for a hearing or just for the meeting?
Yeah, or the notice for the meeting.
As long as it's, if it's just a standard special meeting, as long as it's posted twenty-four hours in advance, you can have it, you just can't. Yeah, you should be good. I said to you, we don't have to, um, set meeting schedules and set dates.
That's the other thing too, is.
Oh, we had to do that.
By the end of the month, right?
I think by the end of January. Is with the other.
We could make it for the twenty-fifth.
So we can delay the decision till the twenty-fifth and then we have to make.
Yeah.
At our next. Aquifer Protection Agency meeting. So it sounds to me like the will of the commission is to delay the decision. And have a special meeting on the twenty-fifth. To decide what our calendar is and to learn what the expectations are. Of this new entity that. We've been for some time and didn't know. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn the Aquifer Protection Agency meeting for tonight?
I make a motion that we adjourn the aquiferish meeting for tonight.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion is made and seconded. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Meeting number two is adjourned. And the page gets seven eighteen.
Thank you.
See you all on the twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Have a good evening.